I will continue to read the books and by inspiration continue to read the spoken word by Jeremiah. And it helped him survive the storm and it helped him overcome. Today, we want to see overcomers because the Bible says in all these things, which things? Sickness, which sickness? Covid, in all these things, which things? The economy, which is not doing well, somebody is unemployed, doesn't know where the next millil is coming from. But in all these things, which things? Maybe isolation, totally isolated, nobody wants to fellowship with you anymore. But in all these things, we are more than conquerors, not just conquerors, not just overcomers, but more than overcomers. That's how God does his things, he doesn't do them by measure, he goes beyond measure. And I'm saying if they be willing people today who are ready to take up this instruction, God is again able. He took them yonder and further. We know the story of our brother Job, he was such a wonderful man until he was so blessed. When you begin to fellowship with God more frequently, you will be blessed. God has this tendency to do things beyond measure. Until when he's happy with you, you will go beyond even normal limits. So Job there was a rich man, Job was a righteous man and the job, he had testimony in heaven. Until God himself testified, have you considered my servant Job? What was the power of Job? Where was his hiding of power? It was because Job was a servant of God, who eschewed evil. Now, eschewing evil is a deliberate, deliberate habit. To say, I know evil, I see evil and I avoid evil. That's what God wanted to see, others were seeing it, but they could not do it. Today, there are still people who bow down because of pressure, there is pressure in the world. But Job knew how to avoid evil, Job knew how to avoid danger, Job knew how to do all these things. And God was happy with that. There's no story or evidence that Job did any miracles. We have no evidence of that, all we know is that Job was a righteous man and the job eschewed evil. That is enough power to carry someone through in 2021. That is enough power to get somebody to overcome. Of course, somebody says, oh, I want a special gift. The special gift is to believe your mercy, to recognize your day and to believe the message in your day. When you can do that, you already have a miracle. Many people will see it and they never see it, many people will hear it and they never hear. Here comes you, probably without too much education, but you can pick the mystery of your day. You can catch the move in your day. God is moving and he's expecting a church on the move. He is expecting brothers on the move, he's expecting sisters on the move. It's my prayer today that even in Essa, South Africa, we shall be able to see people who can stand up and recognize their day and recognize their message and march in the power of revelation. Here, the Lord Jesus Christ is actually instructing the church, go and preach the gospel. And you know, the prophet taught us that preaching the gospel is more than just reading scriptures and repeating the words in the Bible, it is actually demonstration of the word. Now, the word itself, when it says by my stripes you were healed, people must get healed. We must become witnesses to what we believe, we must become witnesses to what the Lord has said. If he says, in my name you shall cast out devils, we must see devils coming out of people. The Lord knew about our day, he recognized that there'll be people who need help, intervention, divine intervention, and the divine intervention, God is not going to send angels, he's not going to send cows, he is going to send people. Somebody must be sent tonight to cast out a devil somewhere. If we cease to cast out devils, devils will overrun, the world is already full of devils. So what must we do as a church? It's about time we become honorable to our task. Let's go back to winning ways, there is a way of winning this battle. It is the Lord's way, he says, I'm the way, the truth and the life. Okay, so never mind what you're going through, don't confess the negative. Job never confessed and said, oh, if only I had more money, if only I was not sick. If only, he continued to believe that he is an overcomer. And that's what God wants, when a man continues to believe despite being surrounded by unbelief. Daniel was surrounded by unbelief, but he purpose to say, look, I know what's going on in Babylon. The fashion is changed and the things are going and the music and everything, but he refused to be overwhelmed. When you get yourself overwhelmed, you lose ground. But when you demand respect for yourself and your God, you achieve. It's my prayer even tonight, that we shall find young people once again who are determined to win anyhow. When you win because you have much resources, you will not be able to point it back to the supernatural. But when you win because somehow God has made the way, you will know that you are what you are by the grace of God. There are people who have been privileged to know God, even in the demonstration of power. There are people who are privileged to know Jehovah through the demonstration of his healing power. They are witnesses that Jehovah is Jehovah Jireh, Jehovah Rehah, Jehovah Reva, Jehovah Shalom. I don't know which Jehovah you know, but I know Jehovah Reva, he healed me, I'm a witness. When he has healed you, you can tell people, I know he can heal because you are a witness. It's important to be a witness in the end time, it's important to confirm the message in the end time. The target is still there, we must preach this gospel and to preach is to demonstrate. Show your neighbor that Christ is alive, show your schoolmates that Christ is alive, show your workmate, Christ is still alive. It's not enough to talk about it, it's necessary, they read the written apostle. As a woman of God, the written apostle, as the young child at school, the written apostle. As a preacher, maybe stop preaching, begin to leave me a sermon. When you begin to leave a sermon, even unbelievers shall confirm, Jesus is alive. Yes, we know the emptitude is there, but is there a heart full of Christ? If it's there, let me see the works of Christ, let me see the manifestation of the promise. He is still looking at Mark 16, he is still looking at the church, is there a match tonight? Between Mark 16 and the church? Is there a match tonight between the brother and Mark 16? Is there a match tonight? If there is a difference, somebody must line up, church is time to line up. Let's go back to the power, this word is power enough to transform a drunkard into a man of God. This word has power enough to change death unto life, it can turn a curse into a blessing. That's what we know is the message. Now, having said that, I want to read another scripture. I will take you to my second scripture, which is Psalms 27 verse 13. Somebody might be saying, okay preacher, we hand you, how do we actually do it? How do we actually do it? So let's go to Psalms. Psalms 27. The book of Psalms is very good, it's very rich. I want to give you a tip there, read a Psalm every day. Read a Psalm every day, it will help you and it will encourage you through the day. I do that, it helps me. I'll read from verse 18, Psalms 27 verse 13. Now listen to this, I had fainted unless I had believed to see the goodness of the Lord in the land of the living. David talking, singing, let's say, Psalms are songs, David singing, he's saying, I had fainted. Unless I had believed, brother, you shall faint, sister, you shall faint. Unless you believe in these economic challenges, your only way out is to believe. There are people faining right now, more educated than you. There are people failing right now, perhaps socially better placed than most of you. And they are failing and faining, politicians are failing and faining. Many people, big people collapsing, going, failing, what is going on? The only thing that will hold is the word, so you better believe the word. I had fainted unless I had believed. This is time to believe, this is not time for just sermons, when to change to end up to the numbers. This is time to believe, start believing and see the difference. Start believing and witness, and a true witness that Jehovah is alive. I'm a true witness that God is a healer, I'm a true witness that the message is alive. Now, when the odds are against you in lockdown, you begin to realize that lockdown is not just locking everyone. It's locking the lockable, there are people who can be shut out and they die out. But there are people who cannot be stopped because they are angered elsewhere, beyond this planet. This planet called Earth, they call, they tell, tell me it is, it has got an atmosphere, it has got this and that. When you are managed by that, you are confined to one planet, but my God is a God of the universe. And in certain galaxies, he watches over me. Even as there is Uranium, even there is Neptune, even when there are so many stars, he has capacity to watch the stars and focus on me. That's what gives me strength to realize that, hey, even when things go wrong, there's something going right. He's watching over me, God is watching over this land. You read the wrong things in the papers because the papers want to sell the paper. They'll tell you about a robbery, they'll tell you about a loss, they'll tell you about a tragedy. That's what they tell, but they don't tell you my story. Because my story does not sell their paper, but I've come here with another bulletin. It's a bulletin from above and it tells me you are more than a conqueror. It tells me in all these things, you are still an overcomer. So brother, sister, you got to believe. Psalms 27 has told us, I had fainted unless I had believed that I'll see his goodness in the land of the living. I'm not waiting for millennia to see the goodness. I'm not waiting for that time when it comes to rapture the church, I want goodness now. I want to experience it now and I will test the fruit of this land here. Don't postpone his goodness, don't put it into the future because of unbelief. You say, oh, brother, next year you shall see me, I want to see you now. Then I'll believe next year, I want to see the fruits now, then I will anticipate next year. Don't limit it to next year, you say, oh, God will speak to us next year, he is speaking now. If he's silent in your life, doesn't mean God is silent. We hear him, we see him, he is among us even tonight. He's not far from you, God can reach out and one touch can make a big difference. David, a man of God, a man after God's own heart, loved from above, loved by people and loved by God. Yet even him fainted, when the enemy is after you, you better be angered right. He said, I had fainted unless I had believed. You know what they had done, they'd hired Goliath's brother, called Ishbebe Nobi. They said, this David, we want to get a special man to destroy him. And they trained Ishbebe Nobi from young, trained him when he was an adult, trained him when he became a warrior. They gave him a sword specifically sharpened for David. And they sent him to war, not to fight against everyone, but to hunt for David. So don't be surprised if there is a witch with your name, don't be surprised if there is an enemy with your name. No, we have seen it in the Bible, there was Ishbebe Nobi with a sword sharpened for David. But still David was a conqueror, he came back with the head of Ishbebe Nobi. That's the dama of the over, he allows Ishbebe Nobi to train, he allows Ishbebe Nobi to sharpen his sword. He allows him many things, but you know, after everything has been done, this 2021 will bring me a trophy. I'll come out with a trophy, the commission has not changed. He is still expecting you to cast out devils, he is expecting you to leave a sermon. He is expecting me to preach one and I'm doing my part. Everybody's on duty, warriors of Christ come trained by me. It's time to execute the program of heaven. We are not going to give up, never mind what he did yesterday, I know who knows tomorrow. I know my redeemer lives and he tells me, unless you believe, son, amen. You know, there is another level of faith. When you begin to believe God, he takes you deeper, he takes you higher until everything around you becomes little and small. Faith when it grows, fear dies, it's time to kill fear. Amen. So David, knowing who he was and knowing what God had done in his life, he did not have space or room for doubt. You see, when you have seen enough supernatural, you are now ready to see more supernatural. It's important to have testimonies as families, it's important to have an experience all the time. Don't tell us what he did last year, don't tell us what he did 30 years ago. God did not quit, 30 years ago, he did not quit because of Covid. You will think God is not in South Africa because there is Covid. No, he's there, he's around, but the people ignore him, they trust other things and they perform other things. But there is someone somewhere who believes in enough to say through it all, through it all. He will see you through because there is a way through, amen. He is here in South Africa, we must harness every advantage. As Christians, we must learn to harness every advantage so that we are able to overcome. I say this because we realize that when there is pandemic like right now, there are a lot of theories. There are others who say, oh, they are conspiring against us, they want to finish the black men. Look, don't look for obscure explanations, the devil has desired to kill you all the time. It's not a conspiracy, no, he's not hiding, he's not pretending, he's putting every effort to kill you. So don't wait for a conspiracy, say, oh, people are planning, no, people can't do this, the devil is at work. And I'm at work, and Jesus is at work, heaven is at work. To make sure the devil fails, we are here to frustrate the devil. We are here to put shame on all his, he will be ashamed again, amen. Oh, he tried many times, some of you are witnesses that the devil can attack. Some of you were attacked not once, several times, but here you are, still believing, faithful. That is already a sign that there is something working on you beyond your ability, beyond your education, beyond circumstances, there is another power at work. Now that power is, we must grow that power, we must manifest that power and we must expand it. Your horizon must expand, begin to see him doing more. If he has done it maybe by measure, let's see him do it without measure. If he has given you a cup of sugar, let's see him give you a sack of sugar. If you have seen him heal the sick, we want him to raise the dead. We want to begin to see Mark 16 fulfilled in our day, not by another. We don't need another prophet to see Jesus, one prophet is enough. Malakai Pho is enough, amen, believer of Malakai Pho. You are believers of Malakai Pho, let him rally behind this message. And begin to see it penetrate this country and win souls to Christ and pull down strongholds of demons. The demons are too free this country, harassing and wrecking homes. They are terrorizing young people, destroying lives, but it's your duty and my duty to take a stand and say, Lord, we believe you, we are here to stand with the world. David said, I had fainted unless I had believed. Some are faining because of hunger, others are faining because of sickness, but others are faining because of mischief. It's all faining, it's all faining and the solution is the same. Go and preach this gospel, go and preach this gospel, we must preach the gospel and show the world that there is another power above their power. There's another system stronger than there are other systems. The system from heaven, it rules over mankind. Oh, the king doubted it, he was called Nebuchadnezzar. He thought he was the greatest king ever created and he looked at what he had built, looked at what he achieved. He looked into his chikwama, there was money, he looked at his ura, there was nsungu, he thought he was a big man. Little power is dangerous, people with little power, very dangerous. He thought he was rich because he had two dams, you think they are rich because you have got 50, 50 rand. That's what causes people to backslide, little things will cause people to backslide. Hey, he started to think he was different and bigger and much more and God looked down. He said, right now, cut down the tree, cut down the tree and the tree was young. And he lost his mind and he went and lived like an animal. We see it happening again, people are living like animals because they cannot acknowledge God. He stayed there for seven years and the rain was upon him, no one could catch him. He would try to catch him, he ran faster than dogs until they gave up. After seven years, one day, I don't know whether he was eating grass or he was climbing a tree, but he looked up and he acknowledged that he who created heavens and earth rules in the affairs of mankind. When he thinks that, he snapped back, he became a man again, he became himself and he looked for clothes. Let it happen again in Trumpet, we want it to happen again in Essa, too many people walking without clothes. Too many people must recognize that heavens do rule in the affairs of mankind. When he realized that, God took him back to the palace and he reestablished him on his throne. Saying, now you know, no more mischief, you couldn't tell him there is no God. He would cast you out of his kingdom because he had learned the bitter way. You don't have to go into the forest and become an animal, you can learn right now. You can make a decision right now that I take sides with Jesus. I'm going to take further and go yonder and make sure people get to know. They may believe or disbelieve, but I'm doing my part, do your part. As the church of the living God, wherever you put your foot, claim it. Wherever you go, claim it for Jesus, because we realize the devil is everywhere. It's like a flood, it's like a flood coming to overflow everything, but guess what? I can tell you one thing, when the enemy comes in like a flood, God will raise a standard. God is raising a standard, you are the standard for Laodicea, I am the standard for Laodicea. God has released his command to say, I'm going to deal with those demons that came from the depths. When the lid was opened, demons came out, and euphrates when they released, demons came out and they are marching, destroying homes, but God is also releasing another army. Yes, it doesn't look like an army, some of them are just women, housewomen, others are just brothers and sisters, little people, but packed with dynamite, little people, but full of the power of that gospel, full of God in the hearts, they can chase out any demon. And the devil sees it, he realizes, I can do what I want to say, but there, they are untouchable. Amen, it's time to believe our God, it's time to believe the message, let's use what we have. When you have a gun, learn how to use it, don't just carry it, learn how to use it, to put it together. How it fires, how far it goes, does it kill? That's important, we must learn how to use what we have, not just have a shelf full of spoken word books which are full of dust and read and touch and used, that will not help in our day. You need the spoken word that you know, you need the message that you know, you need the Bible that you know. Having it on the shelf is not enough, I would rather have it in my heart and not have it on the shelf. Because that which is within you will rise up and lead you. The word that you carry, the word that matures within you is the word that will take you through rapture. You got to have faith in the Bible enough to read it, enough to read it and to believe it. We want another Christian who believes what they read, another group of people who do not compromise on the bill of fire, who do not compromise on the cloud of glory, who will not compromise on what Malakai Pho left us. Despite how many people come with better education, they were educated people before brother Branagh. They were rich people before brother Branagh, but all of them knew nothing about the mysteries of the word. When God sends a man, he sends a complete man, a complete preacher, a complete Christian. When he released us in our day, it's a complete team, don't let us down. The Holy Ghost is already alive, the church must go in line, it must be a complete team, amen. I trust we are together in this fight against evil, in this contention against the original faith. We are seeing winds and the stones rising up to contend against the original faith. And we realize this is our territory, don't lose your boundaries, don't lose your territory. Because there is value, you know what God has given you, he gave us this message, that is the value of our generation. We owe it to God, we owe it to each other, amen. To make sure the testimony remains clean, the testimony of the message remains clean. Therefore we stand, we need others to stand, we need sisters to stand and refuse, refuse to be intimidated by sin. Amen. Daniel was not alone, he had friends in Babylon. Oh, I tell you, the boys were called fanatics because they believed God in everything. And one day, there was a announcement that people are going to worship in a new church, in a new denomination. And they worship a certain image in a certain way, there was drums there, there was instruments. All the players in that country were mobilized to play the music for the king and everyone was afraid. When people are afraid, they do anything, but these boys were not afraid. Who refused to bow down to an image, refused to bow down to internet. Lot of abomination on the internet until young people are bowing down, but this one refused. We know what's there, but we don't believe it, we won't subscribe to that, we will worship God. Oh, they said, there is a fire out there, you guys will be burnt. This is actually written in the gazette, government gazette, to make it so fearful and fearsome. But they said, there is also written, there is a word also written. People have written, but God has already written and they believe they are God up to the fire. And as they face the fire, people thought they would retain and say sorry, but no. In our generation, too many people are compromising, in that generation, people were compromising. But this one stood up and said, we will stand for our God. If the preachers won't do it, the young people will do it. If the singers won't do it, the sisters will do it. If the brothers won't do it, the young people will rise up. Is it John who said, stones shall rise up? Hey, stones shall testify, even rocks shall testify. The Lord Jesus himself was told, tell your people to keep quiet, he says, if they keep quiet, the stones will shout out because this is fulfillment of prophecy. Brother, when I see you as the church of the living God, sisters, when I see you as the church of the living God, it's fulfillment of prophecy. How can it be quietened down by whom and by what, even Paul promised? Maybe let me read that, that will be my last scripture. In the book of Ephesians, chapter 5. Oh, the devil thought he can stop the revival by interfering with the gatherings of people. He doesn't know that now we are spreading the gospel faster. It's spreading faster, chapter 5, I'll read from verse 27. Alright. 26 says that he might sanctify and cleanse it with the washing of the water by the wine, that he might present it to himself, a glorious church, not having spot or wrinkle. or any such thing, but that it should be holy and without blemish. He's talking about the church. He's saying there shall be that church. Whether there is twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, the church shall be there without spot or wrinkle, clean and perfect. God is not lowering the bars because it's now Africa. There's, oh, Africa, you know, they are poor. Oh, Africa, they have less education. Oh, Africa, this, they lie a lot. Oh, Africa, they need sustenance. Africa, no, God is not changing the standards. He is not reducing himself to your level. He is pulling you up to his level. The standards are the same. The targets are the same. The principles are the same. He shall have a church without spot or wrinkle. This is a promise to himself. I will have a church in Essaite. I will have a church in Jobek. I will have a church in Harare without spot or wrinkle. Roushiessness is no substitute. He will demand that you and me will be holy and perfect. He is expecting perfection and he knows it can be done. He lived a life here as an example and he said, I am the way, the truth and life. Today, when you see footprints in the sense of time, you realize there is one way is gone ahead of me. He walked the walk. He went down the valley. You are not the first one in that valley. He walked the walk. You are not the first one to cross the river. He walked the walk. And he tells you, I will be with you. Isn't it the prophet? When he talked to the angel, he was told to be sincere. And when he was told to be sincere, he promised to be sincere. And when he says, I will go, the angel says, I'll be with you. That's the beauty of our Father. That's the beauty of the Bible. The God of the Bible goes with you. When he sent Moses to Egypt to rescue people from slavery. Oh, people say, hey, slavery is bad. But it's worse today than it was when Moses went to Egypt. It's worse slavery today. People are bound by, people in jail, people in chains. When the chains are visible, it's easier. You can wake out a system to let you free. But when the chains are invisible, people think they are free, yet they're in jail. People think they are free, yet they are in chains. They don't even seek help. Even when we see it, that the people are in chains, we are not even allowed to let them free. They are not even willing to be set free because they are completely deceived. We are living in a generation where men and women are deceived. Old and young are deceived. But there is another group of people. That case not ignorant of the wiles of the devil. There is another group of people that is sufficiently equipped to deal with the challenge of the hour. God is expecting a church without spot or wrinkle. God is expecting a brother, a sister, who can stand firm and justify to say, ah, he has brought me this far. He didn't bring me this far to abandon me now. Not in twenty twenty one. He didn't bring me through all this lockdown to leave me here to be embarrassed. God says, my people shall not be put to shame. They are people's people upon whom shame cannot stick because there is too much grace upon their life. There is too much favor around their lives. We must begin to believe this and talk about it. Don't speak to say there are limitations. Talk about the holiness, the goodness. Talk about the abundance of Jehovah. He can multiply anything. He can magnify anyone. Even the little one, he can magnify. Zakeyo the shortest and recognized and then one never attended a single service. But the day Jesus visited Jericho, when he went into Jericho, oh, there were others who wanted to be seen. There were others wanting to be greeted with. But he picked out Zakeyo. From his hiding in the leaves, in the tree, God picked him out. And that was his day. And he made full use of it. Which one is your day? When were you picked? Don't overlook the day that he visited you. Don't overlook the day he made a difference in your life. Never overlook the supernatural in your life because everything and every such sentiment matters. When God does anything, it's for a purpose and a reason. If he healed you, it's for a purpose and a reason. Tell someone about it. It might help them to overcome. We are living in a day where there is too much falsehood on the news, too much falsehood in the newspapers, everywhere, social media, until lies are what people live by. People are being deceived every day. It's becoming almost acceptable that there is lying involved in the news. But in the world, that must change. Lies must be flushed out from the book, from your life, from your family, from everywhere. Lies must be flushed out. It's a lie that you are sick, flush it out. It's a lie that you are poor, flush it out. It's a lie. You are not a victim, you are a victor. Don't accept that spirit of being a victim. Oh, the whites hate me. Oh, these ones don't like me. Oh, these ones, look, the devil doesn't like you either. It's nothing new. There is nothing new. I know who likes me. The whole world can hate me, but tell you what Jesus loves. And my father created this earth. And I'm friends with my father. Get into fellowship and friendship. Begin to love him and talk about him like your brother Enoch. He got tired of talking to people. You know, people talk too much. Sometimes they say wrong things and you are implicated in the wrong things. You end up having to explain. But when you talk to God, who will question God? Make friends with Jehovah. Take time to talk to him. I tell you, one day, he will walk you home and you will like it there. Enoch is still walking with Jehovah. He is still fellowshipping with Jehovah. He went with him and it's recorded for your benefit and my benefit. Let me finish with a quotation. And this quotation I like very much. It is from this message, speak to this mountain. I will read a very short part of that message. It says here, oh, it's five, seven, one, two, one, five. Five, seven, one, two, one, five. Now, it says here. Now, can you make two times, two times two equal four? It's a question. You are looking for something. I may never be in this pulpit again. You are looking for something that's passing by you and you don't recognize it. The prophet is telling the people, it's passing by you now and you don't recognize it. You are waiting for a special holy hour, special holy season, special holy something. It's passing by you. If it's healing, be like that woman who had a blind issue. He saw in passing, buried, he took hold of it. After a while, when it's gone, then they will pick this up and say, why did this happen? When did this revival go on? When did this take place? It's too far by then. It's happening now. Revival must happen now. You as the church must get into action now. Believers must begin to act on their faith now. The time is now. Don't allow it to pass. Don't allow it to go. Get a hold of the lifeline. Get a hold of the lifeline. Begin to feel the power in the lifeline. Get yourself some life and be alive. When you are alive, death cannot coexist with life. It departs from you. It goes away. That's the commission to the church. Commission to every mother, commission to every father, every brother, every sister, young people and old. This is our commission. It's not to send Peter, it's to send you. We must preach this gospel. We must demonstrate this faith. Amen. Too many people think church is the same until some have quit coming to church. Quit listening to the word. Quit following sermons because they've lost the zeal, that life, that original love of the gospel. But there is someone on fire now. Someone burning with it now. They want to carry on, to continue. Amen. I want to be counted as one of the believers in this intern period who is standing with Christ, who is living for Christ and demonstrating the power of the Holy Ghost. Believe us thou this. May God bless you. I'm going to pray. I'm going to invite you to bow your heads and I'll invite you, if there is any need anywhere, right now. Just remember, God sees and God answers prayer. So if there's any need today, the commission is still the same. If there's any spirit anywhere, if someone is oppressed by demons, harassed by evil spirits, if it's hunger, whatever it is, I'm here to pray with you because the Bible said, in my name they shall cast out devils. We want to cast out that devil so that you are set free. So you can raise your hand and receive a blessing. God is good at substitution. He takes away hunger and brings away, brings more plenty. He takes away sickness and brings good health. He takes away pain and gives you glory. He can do it again. He took away the muddy waters of Egypt and gave them water from the rock. He took away from the burning sun of Egypt and gave them the fill of fire. Today, he can substitute your shame into his glory. Raise your hand and I'll commit you to the Lord. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening. We thank you for the message. We thank you for the prophet. We thank you, Lord, for the Bible and the instruction. We are disciples. Forward it over that spirit, even the spirit of this nation, even the spirit of this city, even the spirit anywhere. We put it under our feet and we proclaim liberty to the believers. Father, have mess upon us. Give us what it takes, Lord, to go through life with a testimony of faith. We love you and we worship you and we glorify thy name. Thy name shall be known because of that brother and that sister because of this church. Lord, we love you and we worship you. May we commit everyone tonight into your hands, praying and believing in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you all.
Amen, 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 amen. Ah, we have been blessed. Hallelujah. I believe that tonight we are still saying the commission has not changed. Amen. Not that it has not yet changed, but it has not changed. Amen. Because we know what God is doing, what he promised in the scripture is what he's doing today. Amen. Ah, we just want to ah make our special thanks to our precious pastor ah for making up this time, Pastor Bunga, for making up this time eh to come through and bless us to the gift that God has placed in him. Amen. I want to walk away and go out into our lives remembering that whatever God has changed, whatever God has said, he cannot change. Amen. And therefore, I want to say, God bless you saints, wherever you are. Remember, when you hear the devil coming howling, remember that the commission has not yet changed. If there are things that are troubling you, the minister has spoken. Your duty and my duty is only to believe the messengers of God. And therefore, want to go back home to our homes and wherever we are and just pray and keep on holding on to that word to say, Lord, whatever you have promised, you said, you shall be this to the church. You said you shall protect us. Look at all the scriptures that the pastor has shared tonight to make us to go back to our original faith. You know, and you are speaking, I just remember that scripture says we should earnestly contend eh to go back to the faith that was once delivered to the saints. To me, I see the very essence of going back and the restoration of eh what the faith that was in the original saints. I see a restoration of original apostolic power. And tonight, we want to say, Pastor, thank you and God richly bless you. To all the believers that are seeing us online for the first time, eh please subscribe to our channels and whenever we have new videos, you'll always be posted. I want to make special thanks eh to Pastor Angwenya and also Pastor Joshua Kanyamba to say, God bless you to all the ministers. I see all the amens and everything else. God bless you saints. Until we meet again, shalom and God bless you.